I don't have rights to approve anything.
Any bridges, any township bridges, need approval by the commission before we pay for the culverts that are gonna replace that bridge.
This is from the township policy.
Yeah.
Right. Just so we're all aware of it.
Anything else?
Can we put that on that if the Water Board puts them in, of course.
No, that's not a culvert policy. That's the Water Board.
Not the drain.
That's the drain. Why do we have to approve it if we got no say?
We're township. The Water Board is.
You're switching topics here now. You're talking about the water.
Yes, because you just said approving, and I'm saying, if you're talking about cost of everything, do these guys, when they get this policy, it's ready to go, but can we, in this policy, add to that that we have to look it over and approve it?
For the Water Board? Isn't that why you have a Water Board?
I understand that.
And they've been very diligent when they're putting them in.
And it's all century code? So you answer your question? No, we don't have much say in that one.
If we're paying for it, do we?
It's in century code that says you have to pay.
Well, I'm just asking because the reason you want, I know why I'm asking, is because I'm gonna get questioned about it from a lot of different angles, not just what happened here today, but from other people.
You know, and the option we have, you can go to legislative board and try to change the century code.
That's the reason I asked the question is what's the option? And now I know. Thank you.
Anything else in the culvert policy? The county township one?
It's gotta be up to county standards, right?
Yep.
Like Brian said, which are you gonna kinda?
Well, I've been trying to keep a track, you know, I mean, and I'm not mentioning any names, but it's a lot easier to keep track when I know which contractor the township's hired too.
Right.
I mean, when there is a contractor that I have some, maybe some concerns with, I spend more time with the project.
Alright, that's understandable. Okay, anything else? I'm gonna put this to bed. And then we'll approve the revised one when Oliver brings it back in a written form, right?
December meeting?
Probably with that. Okay. County maintenance agreement. This is a rubber stamp thing.
And just.
It is, obviously, it's signatures, but I'll read the top of this because this is what it's about. All federal aid highway projects have been inspected and are maintained in good, safe condition for general public use. Maintenance is in accordance with the North Dakota Department of Transportation Construction and Maintenance Agreement. So basically, you're saying that anything that they spend state and federal money on meets their standards and specs for maintenance going forward. Now, that might seem like a rubber stamp, but that actually sounds like a can of worms to me.
And it can be a daunting task, you know, but what are we gonna do? Not sign it?
And you're gonna, you're gonna sign that because otherwise you're not gonna get any funds from them.
That's right.
But, once that project's completed and it's your baby, now you're saying that you're gonna do things the way that they say, that you're gonna do things.
We don't need a motion for that.
No, it's just you.
FYI, okay? Dental, insurance for the upcoming year.
There is one bit of good news today, and that's that your dental rates aren't changing.
It's surprising.
It is. And, uh, election is done. Dan sad about that?
Very disappointed. Actually, it's not done.
No, you got canvassing.
We got canvassing.
The eighteenth, right?
So, just, there's the info for you from, on the standalone desktop computer. Amazing voter turnout in West Dakota.
Turnout.
Twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine votes were cast, and obviously, we could still have a few more votes after canvassing. It won't be significantly more than that. I was very appreciative of the fact that the vast, vast, vast majority of absentee ballots we sent out came back. I wanna say it was down to less than twenty out of well over five hundred that were sent out came back.
There were that many absentee, huh? Five hundred?
Well, we, how many, how many did we have cast here? Five hundred and thirteen were actually counted.
Wow.
And I think we sent out just over five hundred and thirty. And so, that was unusual that you would get that many back.
Same thing, right? Here, I think I read in the paper somewhere.
But, no, we had, obviously, quite a few voters on election day. Harvey had exactly one thousand voters on election day. Fesden had, I wanna say, four forty-five, and Oden had over two hundred, but all told, twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine votes cast. When it comes to active voters, and that is a definition, eligible voters and active voters are two different things. Eligible, obviously, you're over eighteen years old, you're a US citizen, you've lived here for thirty days, not everybody votes. When it comes to eligible voters, our turnout was nearly seventy-four percent. When it comes to active voters, it was over eighty-five percent. So, that turnout was.
Is active voters, is that where they're keeping track of that you've been voting past years, correct?
Yes. So, now, I mean, believe it or not, we have people that are eligible to vote that just never vote.
Have never voted.
So, there's all your stuff. I don't believe there's anything in here that is eligible for recount. So, we still have to, we'll have to test our machines one more time. That's just quite a long, we gotta canvass. When we go to canvass, I would be hard pressed to think that we're gonna have much more than five votes to even consider. So.
Alright, excellent. Okay, next item there, foreclosure property sale. You now have, we talked briefly about this in the past or earlier today. That's the list of properties that Wells County could potentially get back. There too, we don't have to do anything with this, right? Just FYI.
Yeah, three of them, the bottom one on the first page has a structure on it. On the backside.
Okay, who's that back at? Hertzfield structure?
Yes, that's the old Hertzfield cafe.
Oh, that cafe, that's right. Yep, yep, yep.
Right on the corner, that has a structure on it. On the back page, the first listing has a structure on it, in Hertzfield.
That's a house?
Yep, and the, the lot right below it is an empty lot that's adjacent to that, and is owned by the same, or was owned by the same party, it's owned by Wells County. And the, where is it? Uh, the third one from the bottom has a structure on it. You would like to think that those lots that are in excess of almost twenty-five thousand dollars would have structures on them. No, those are just lots that people vacated, left it. What used to be a house sitting on it, left it for the city of Harvey to clean up in those cases. Those are all specials related to that property that, you know, and I, people talk about owning properties are right, and it is. It's also a responsibility, and that's that you need to take care of your property, and those people obviously didn't. They just upped and left, and that's no different than the rest of these being vacant lots. They're just lots that people had and decided to just let them go and not pay the taxes on them. So, while it is a right to own property, it's also a responsibility, and one of those responsibilities is to pay your taxes. So, those are what are currently on there. The owner does have the opportunity to redo, redeem them up until a minute before the sale, essentially, which is on November nineteenth.
Don't you wanna branch out into Hertzfield? We can have a couple of properties on Main Street.
Yeah, you have Stark's Cafe there. They're literally closing down, so we can open them up.
Yep, there you go.
Or get someone else to do it.
Yeah.
That's right. Alright, there too. We don't have to do anything with that.
I bet that community would like to see that, huh?
Yeah.
Well, look how busy Dairy King is.
Alright, uh, transfer.
Alright, I'm not, I'm not gonna bring you all the details, just because it is too much to try and consume. Brian Miller has seen the details of this and.
Make your head hurt?
Few pages of numbers, or more than a few. So, needless to say that, you know, we, we are going to pay some money out assuming you approve this. We're gonna pay Eddie County seventy-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, one-seventy-five cents. We're gonna pay Foster County eighty-one thousand, one-sixty-seven and twelve cents for a total of one-fifty-seven, nine-twenty-nine, eighty-seven. But, the Human Service Zone is also going to reimburse Wells County for payments that we've incurred over the last four years. On behalf of those two counties, they're going to reimburse us fifty-eight thousand, one-fifty-nine, forty-three. We're gonna transfer some money in-house to the tune of sixteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and forty cents. So, all told, this will cost Wells County ninety-eight thousand, ninety-five dollars and four cents when it's all said and done. And there have, are in the process of putting new rules in place to, they're gonna pay their own indirect costs from now on. They can just have their indirect money, and they can pay their own costs. And then, at the end of the day, we don't owe them nothing, and they can't come here looking for us to pay their bills on their behalf, so. How it was done is how it was done, how it was set up, the way that it was when the state quote-unquote took over social services. They took over social services, they took over the direct part. That's the salaries and the benefits and those types. Indirect costs, you can bill out anything that's indirect, and the state will reimburse you twenty-five cents on the dollar. So, I think it would be far better if Rockford and Carrington did their own indirects, and that's the direction that the board has taken. So, if you are, approval of this, it's still not perfect.
But it's better than originally.
It's way better than what it originally was, and this just came up yesterday. They reached out and they wanna buy some either new or slightly-used vehicles for social services. And I wrote back and I said, I wanna know how these vehicles are gonna be licensed and insured and so on and so forth, because, again, Wells County pays that bill. That, to me, is a direct cost, okay? Nobody else is using those cars. You get the insurance on these things, you pay in the derf the insurance costs, okay? Now, they can't title them because they're not a political subdivision, alright? So, they'll still have to be titled by Wells County. But we should not pay a single bill for this stuff. That should all be direct costs. We're not sharing the vehicles with the road department.
So, is that acted on by the board yet?
Not yet, but it's gonna need to be, but they wanna buy these vehicles right now. You know, no reputable car dealer is gonna say, no, we're not gonna sell you these, okay? They can wait three weeks to get their money.
Do they need, now we gotta define direct costs. When you go to the state, does the state define what direct costs are?
Any, anything, anything that can't be attributed to something else.
Anything else is a direct cost.
Well, this automobile is a classic example of it. Well, right now, where does the insurance bill come? Comes to Wells County, okay? Cause those cars are owned by Wells County, but we don't use them.
But that should all be reimbursed by the state.
You are correct. It should be, but it hasn't been in the entire lifetime of social services being taken over by the state. Wells County's paid that bill. This was my contention from the get-go when they started saying, you owe us this money. I said, well, what about all the money you owe us?
Right.
Okay? Nobody's keeping track of that, and that's why this looks way different today than it did last summer when we got the news, or got the Foster County Independent and Rockford transcript that said Wells County's screwing these other two counties out of there.
Are they, are they good with, is Eddie and Foster good with these dollar amounts?
They certainly were in the meeting.
They were at the meeting.
I think they're happy it's getting solved.
Very well, it's getting resolved.
You know, and that's just an example of the growing pains of when state takes this over, and then what muddies the water is, every, every county isn't separate anymore, and now you've come up with a district. And then there's big gray areas, cause you've got Wells County being the money manager for the other two.
Yeah, and this all came about, thought, oh, that's great, Wells County's the host county.
I'm sure Dan would have it different now, too.
That would, that would've been great to give it to Foster County.
And there is, I mean, part of my salary and benefits, same way the state's attorney, same way the sheriff, those, those are indirect costs. Utilizing a building back there, that's their space. But this is an indirect cost when you pay the utilities, right? Because there's other things that are using it. That are using it, okay? So, that's why this was so difficult from the get-go. So, for example, we had all kinds of payments that we made to Fourth Corp for cleaning the Social Service Department in Rockford. They have their own building, it's across the street from the courthouse. That should've been a direct cost.
Right.
Okay, but we've been paying that since 2020.
Really?
Okay, so that's part of that fifty-eight thousand dollars that's gonna get paid back to Wells County now. We went back through five years of bills.
Oh, man.
And, yeah, this one's not an easy task. Fifteen minutes of searching in the back office, okay?
You have to go to the attic for that?
And a lot of, a lot of kudos to Allison Nibel, who does a lot of clerical stuff for the Human Service Zone. A lot of credit to Jason Coffey at the State of North Dakota, who is part of the Human Service Center, because a lot of this leaving. When I sat at that meeting in Foster County and I got an index finger pointed in my chest saying, you owe us this money. And I said, Jesus, you guys think this is just, I'll run back to Fesden and write you a check? It's way more complicated than that. No, it isn't. You owe us this money. Yeah, it was way more complicated than that, and I, those people looked at those numbers. I came to the last meeting and I don't even think they, they started looking at pages and just, yeah, this is fine.
I think everybody that worked on it, I mean, that was a big project, and everybody's just happy that it's gonna be done and over with and hopefully go forward.
Starting a better way? It's getting changed.
Well, it'll, it'll be, it'll be better going forward because they're all, you know, coming back to.
IOU or you owe me.
You get an allocation of indirect funds from the State of North Dakota. They will come to Wells County and will be the next day shipped off to those two counties. Do whatever you want. Knock yourself out, it's your money.
Question. You said that the, the heating costs and everything were indirect because of all the people in the building. Would it be fair to say that their square footage and their percentage of the heat bill should be paid by a direct cost? I'm just asking the question because there is some direct cost there.
That's where you, like, in Rockford with the Eddie County Social Service building there, that's a direct cost because nobody else is in it.
Right, I know.
We have extension, we have emergency manager, you know, we have other tenants. This room right here is used for all kinds of different things, both public and private. So, yeah, they pay a portion of the utilities here, but it's an indirect cost, et cetera. Our postage meter at the county is an indirect cost because they can come over and use it, and they have an account on there, and so on. But, like an automobile, if it was being used by another party, then it would be an indirect cost, but it's not. It's a direct cost. Salary and benefits, they don't, they're not employed to do anything else. They only provide services for the Human Service Zone. Those are easy direct costs.
Right.
So, the state does pay one hundred percent of all direct costs.
Yeah, I, I know that, but I'm just saying, there are some direct costs here, or a percentage of this building that they use.
It would be just really hard to, same with this postage meter thing. You could keep track, well, how about this room though? They use this conference room eight times a year.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
It would just be hard, and that's why it's defined as indirect.
Right, I, I understand all that, I just. But I'm, I'm an indirect cost for them. The state's attorney's an indirect cost for them. The treasurer's an indirect cost for them. The custodial staff is an indirect cost for them because we all provide a service that enables them to exist. And that's all part of a mathematical formula that you would stare at for years and not read now.
Yeah.
So, that's what, that's why that money comes back to the respective counties. And Carrington hosts their social services in the basement of their courthouse, so that, that's an indirect cost. Alright, hopefully, it's all fair now, but I do need a motion from you guys to go ahead and allocate those two.
Motion to approve that transfer.
And that's like fifty grand, you say?
Well, it's gonna come out to a hundred grand at the end of the day. We're gonna pay a hundred and sixty grand out, and sixty's gonna come back.
Motion approved? Fine.
Brian's got a motion.
Well, he's gonna second it, too.
Motion by Brian, second by Boone. Any other questions or discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Opposed?
Okay, and then, before you go on, I'll just say, I feel better about this because you guys actually approved that. Culvert policy, okay? You actually got to approve the spending of these dollars.
Right.
Okay? I'm trying to suggest to you that's why you need more control over your culvert policy.
Well, I know. Right.
Thanks, Stan, for all the work you did on that, figuring that out with those other guys.
I knew you could do her. I just knew you could do it.
Well, I think another thing, on a different subject, you know how fast Wells County's results were in for the election? They were like extremely fast. So, I think Dan deserved, Dan and Renee and all the people that worked with the election deserve some credit, too, because I was, I was watching on Tuesday night, and Wells County was right there. Our results were in. Top, top, top five percent.
If we could just lay a fire under the Harvey election workers, it'd be faster even then.
But, I mean, it was.
Rick Eckert, Rick Eckert, your wife and Beth Ussis should drive faster to president.
Well, I don't know who came, who brought him over here. Those, well, the two judges. It was, it was greatly appreciated, I know, by me and a lot of people, the hard work and how quick we knew on Tuesday night, so, thank you.
Alright, alright. Okay.
Alright.
Alright, the, takeaways from the, or the convention.
Yeah, any input on the convention? Workshops you went to, input you got from somebody?
Cause I just wish it was more compacted and not so much downtime during Monday, I guess.
Vendors.
One workshop and hours of vendors.
You know, and it's never been that way.
It's never been that way.
It was always two workshops on Monday and one work, two blocks of workshops on Monday and one block on Tuesday, and now it's gone opposite.
Have they done that to try to make people to stay on Tuesday? I don't, I don't know.
Well, they're probably trying to give their vendors due diligence, cause they're really only set up Monday, for the most part.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't know why. That's a lot of time to go walk around.
Well, you, you only look so long, you know, I love to. I wasn't overly impressed with the workshops this, I, I've been to a lot of other, better workshops than this year. I mean, that's just my opinion.
I had a laugh, but I went to the one, safety of ATVs and UTVs and stuff, you know? A lot of counties have had a lot of lawsuits because of the nuisance for spraying and stuff and tipping over and all that stuff, so. After sitting and watching what you shouldn't do with it, I'm a poster boy for what you shouldn't do on purpose.
I kinda found it interesting when you said, I'm gonna go to that one because I drive my UTV like evil could evil, or however you said it, so, yeah.
It was interesting, one of the things, DOT was very good. One day, they were standing kinda outside, cause they were in between, I got to visit, they were very open to visit. I mean, that's a nice thing that they can still, you know, go there. I talked to a little bit about the stuff around Harvey and stuff, but what I'm saying is, is they're willing to, you know.
Are you meaning me?
No, 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 this was a different.
Informally.
Informally, they were just outside.
Those guys always.
Oh, no, they're all. But, I mean, that's just good to see. I mean, that's just something that's really nice to have available.
I enjoyed the Tuesday workshops, both the one that I went to, yeah.
You said the ones, or.
Yeah, Mondays, I, it wasn't a lot that interested me.
There was one on Public Information Officer. I did not get to go to it, and it was at the same time as the Measure Four, which I felt like, yeah, I gotta go to that one and so on. But, Public Information Officer is something that you're going to hear about again. We are going to try, and I feel it's my duty, I guess, this probably coincides with those township meetings or the tax meetings that we held. We held another one of those in Sykesville in the event that we didn't know that. But, I just think it's so ironic that in the age of information that we're living in, nobody has any information, okay? We're doing all the information. And I guess, you know, I've got some other things that I've gotta deal with between now and the first January. That's a personal nature, but I am going to do my level best to create a Public Information Office within Wells County to try and get information out to the public, because as much information's available, you're only gonna know what is that you consume. And if you consume BS uptown or wherever it is that you go to visit with and interact with people, then you've got bad information, but people will take that as proof.
More of that out there than ever.
Ninety-five percent of the information is, is coffee gossip, something, I mean, it's bar gossip.
Some places it is, some places it isn't. Anything else on the state convention? Okay, your next handout is, PERS, of course, is no more, or it is, but there's a new, what do you wanna say, retirement plan for new employees. Dan, go ahead.
Beginning on January first in 2025, any new employee that we hire that is not already a PERS employee who may come to us from some other political subdivision, whether it's in Wells County or anywhere in the state of North Dakota, will be put into what's called a defined contribution. What we're, what we have now is a defined benefit plan, which doesn't matter what you put into it. Your benefit is based on, you know, your longevity and your salary and those types of things. We now have a defined contribution plan, and so, for right now, you pay, PERS right now, except for law enforcement, is sixteen point two-six percent. The employee pays one percent, you pay the other fifteen point two-six percent. That's the agreement that you have with your employees. When a new employee comes after, on or after January first of 2025, this is the plan that they have. And I've included this sheet here, and it makes it look difficult. The top line there, okay? You are obligated to contribute the five point two-six. The employee is responsible for four percent. Now, you can choose to pick up that tab. That's what you are doing right now.
Your old employee.
Okay, so it's, it's not a stretch to say that you're gonna optionally pick that up. However, the employee has to decide, and this is a lifetime decision, that they have to make in the first thirty days that they're employed. And if I sound like I'm being overly serious about this, I am. And I asked the question when I went to the workshop at NDACO. I said, do you really think it's wise to ask, let's just use a twenty-five-year-old to make a lifetime decision about their retirement benefit that they're, and they said, well, it's the law, so, yeah. So, employee has a choice. They can take one percent and get a match. They can take two percent and get a match. They can take three percent and get a match. They can take four percent and get a match. What do you think most young people are gonna say?
They're gonna get a match.
I don't wanna put up a bunch of my money. I want my paycheck. And they're, they're not making a decision while they're working for Wells County. They're making a decision for the rest of their life in any job that offers PERS, because they will be thrust into that plan. That's the only plan.
You never have the opportunity to modify that, really?
Nope. If, if you decide that you want to do more, you better hope that your employee matches your nationwide contribution or your 401K or whatever. This is a 401K model, okay? Except you do not get the option of ever changing it. It, to me, that's crazy, but this is what they chose to do, and nevertheless.
Legislature can revise that, correct, or not?
Maybe, maybe not. Well, you know, it would take a legislative.
Action, right.
Action, but according to them, this is a lifetime decision.
Well, as it is with the law today.
Yep, and, 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 you know, to ask a forty-five-year-old probably isn't, you, you would like to think you're gonna get the answer that you would expect. But to ask a young person, obviously, I've been in the business of hiring a lot of young people in the past.